Welcome to the special meeting of Brisbane Planning Commission, Thursday, October 29th, 2015, at 7:30, Brisbane City Hall, 50 Park Place, Brisbane. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Doe?
Present.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
The records show Commissioners Parker and Reinhardt are not present at the moment.
May we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
A motion that we adopt the agenda for tonight.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to new business. Tonight's public hearing is on the Brisbane Baylands Final Environmental Impact Report and Related Planning Applications. The Baylands Concept Plans, the Baylands Specific Plan, the General Plan Amendment Case GP-01-06. Specific topics include Public Services and Facilities, Recreation, Utilities and Service Systems, Water Supply. Universal Paragon Corporation is the applicant. Owners are various. APN is various.
Madam Chairman, we normally run through the entire staff report of all the items and then open it up for public comment testimony. Is that something you want to pursue tonight, or do you want to take a show of hands of interest on items that are under discussion and you want to break it up differently? I defer to the Chair and the Commission in that regard.
I'm okay with the staff report first. I think that might be most informative. It's okay with my fellow Commissions.
No problem.
Yeah.
So for the entire, all three topics?
Yes, please. And I have the cards. It looks like there's only five speaker cards today. Does anybody else, please turn it into the staff so we can get a gauge as to how much time we should allocate. Thank you.
Well, with that, then I'll turn it over to Lloyd Zola. So what will, the three basic subjects we'll talk about tonight will be Public Services and Facilities, then Recreation, and then Water Supply. Public Services and Facilities is a broad range of the services and facilities provided by the city and special districts. Police Services, the basic impact is a major increase in calls for service. And the Police Department looked at what level of calls they would get with the various scenarios and determined a couple things. One is that a storefront substation would be needed within the Baylands for any of the scenarios, for any substantial development out there. But also that right now policing in the city of Brisbane is a single beat. And for any of the scenarios or any substantial development within the Baylands, they would need an additional beat. So you would go to a two-beat system, and they would need to add 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week shifts. The addition of shifts and personnel and the way that they actually staff the department are not a SEQA issue. And so as part of the planning review, one of the things that's being recommended to you is a requirement for any development as part of a specific plan to prepare a Police Services and Facilities Plan that would deal with how do those shifts get put in place, second-beat requirements, staffing for arena events in the case of the arena, but laying out what we talked about earlier, tying the timing of police expansion or the timing of development to the ability of the city to expand those police beats. And that is that type of concurrency that we had talked about before. The other thing that the EIR determined is with the expansion the Police Department would need, there is adequate space in their existing facility. So while they want and need a storefront substation out in the Baylands, that's really for convenience and community policing as opposed to inadequacy of their main facility at City Hall here.
Are you going to explain the beat system? Because I was unaware that Brisbane was on a single-beat system.
Yeah.
It seems difficult to manage our current services with one beat.
It's a relatively small city, physically and in terms of number of calls, so that the patrol cars that are out are not assigned to any specific area of the city.
So a beat is not a time period?
No.
It's a spatial relationship?
Right. There's two different things. A beat is a spatial relationship.
Got it.
And then you have shifts. So right now you have multiple shifts within a single beat.
Okay, understand.
Yeah. Now, fire protection, similar kind of issue. Substantial increase in calls for service. And the basic requirement is that also to prepare a fire protection services plan. Because right now, North County Fire District does not meet, or Brisbane and the Baylands does not meet their basic standards. So, basic standards that would be looked at would be all development within the Baylands to be within a mile and a half of a fully-staffed station. Fully-staffed station means four firemen on a company. Right now, they're using three people on a company, which is adequate, but that's not what's being called for. Also, buildings over three stories to be within two miles of a ladder company, adequate fire flow, and then response time. So there's a series of performance standards. And the planning recommendation is, as part of the specific plan, the city should then require the fire protection services plan to tie the level of development on the Baylands to this availability. And actually, the need to be within a mile and a half of a fully-staffed station, four-person company, occurs right at the beginning. As soon as building materials are brought out to the site that are flammable, the adequate fire flow is needed because right now, it's a pretty rudimentary system out there, as well as staffing issues.
What are the California requirements for the distance to a fire station?
There are not state standards. It's through what is called the Insurance Services Office, which is a rating company. And then there are basic standards that they have as how they rate fire rates for individual districts and cities. And to meet their standards, this is what's there.
All right.
Yeah. And then the district also maintains standards that say from the time we get a call, we want to be out at the site, operating, it's reflex time, within so many minutes. Because what they have found in a fire in a building, if you're not there within six minutes of getting that call, typically the building is a loss. And so those standards are built into, when I say meet the district's response time performance standards. So that is a planning requirement that would be placed onto the specific plan tied to its phasing program. Schools is also, not surprisingly, there would be a substantial increase in enrollments for the Bay Shore Elementary District as well as the High School District. But what isn't commonly thought of is that in California now, commercial and industrial development generates students. Because parents have the option of registering their children for school either based on where they live or based on where they work. And so you could actually, if you work and live in different communities, you can register your children for school based on your place of employment. One of the reasons that's done is just the convenience of taking your kids to a school near work. But also is done, and the background is also, that that allows school fees to be charged to commercial and industrial projects. And so residential projects, commercial industrial projects, all pay school fees. The law says that payment of those school fees is mitigation in full. So, and you as a city are precluded from saying, "We don't think there'll be adequate schools, school facilities. We don't know that the school fees would actually build the schools." Responsibility for construction of schools lies with the school districts. The only thing you can require in terms of number of school classrooms is payment of fees. Now, as part of the EIR, the EIR also looks at what are the impacts of building those schools? So the traffic involved, air quality, so on. And that's part of all the other sections of the EIR. But you cannot, you don't have authority to lay out, gee, we think there ought to be more than payment of fees in relation to building schools.
Are the levels of fees set, or is that set by the city or is it set by statute?
Yeah, the city cannot set the fees. That's between statute and the school district. There are statutory fees. The districts are required to go through a study to demonstrate that, yes, they can collect up to the statutory fee. But in some cases, particularly in the Bay Area and other places, statutory fees fall short of actually building school because of land acquisition. And so one of the things the city can do and is part of the EIR mitigation measures is looking at reservation of school sites. And so the basic way that it's done is a school site is reserved. You cannot require dedication of the school site. So we can require reservation of the school site. The district then uses the fees to purchase the school site at fair market value and build the schools, the way the process is laid out.
And yet Brisbane has a special property tax for the schools that could also, something like that is also in the scope of what we could do in the Baylands, I would imagine.
That would be through the school district.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Libraries, obviously, again, a substantial increase in demand for library services in the developer-sponsored plan because of the residential. Much less demand, although there will be some demand in the non-residential scenarios. And there is a mitigation measure for provision of a functioning library for the DSP and for the developer-sponsored plan scenarios. We'll talk a little bit about water infrastructure. Again, all of the Public Services and Facilities Utilities, basic impact is a substantial demand, increase in demand for water facilities. The issue here, not only is requirement for building onsite water facilities as part of the specific plan laid out, but the city does not have adequate, and we'll talk about water supply in a second, the city does not have adequate storage facilities for the Baylands. And water is typically stored in tanks or reservoirs. It's drawn down during the day, then reservoirs are filled during off-peak hours. And so in the event of a fire where there's a large fire demand, there's water stored for peak day and emergency use. The mitigation measure is for construction of a off-site water storage facility. The city's Public Works Director has looked at that. They have looked at some sites, and basically will need to be in a hillside location so you can get water pressure just from gravity coming down as opposed to creating pumps. And we have identified a significant unavoidable impact for the impacts of building that because a site isn't known. And while we believe that mitigation can be provided for whatever impacts of building that, without a specific site, that cannot be said. And so there will be subsequent environmental documentation once a specific site is identified for that and construction of that facility. The other thing we'll talk about also in relation to water supply is part of the construction of water facilities included in all of the scenarios and in most of the alternatives is construction of a recycled water plant so that water would be recycled within the Baylands for use within the Baylands.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If we have a water tank somewhere, and this I just never got firmly in my mind, we would be required since the Baylands is in Brisbane to put it in San Mateo County? Or, I'm a little confused on that question.
No. There would not be a requirement on the jurisdiction the water, the tank is within. The restrictions would be mostly elevation and distance. You'd want the shortest distance at a certain elevation going up. If it's too high in elevation, water pressure is too great as the water comes down. If it's too low in elevation, you have to increase water pressure. So there are some basic engineering parameters as to where you would locate that facility. The city operates two water districts as a single entity, so you also have to look at pressure zones and getting the right design for it. But there's not a limitation on, it must be in San Mateo County. Some other considerations on public facilities and questions that came up in the EIR. One is all the costs for the capital facilities, construction of water facilities, sewer facilities, the water tank, all of those capital facilities are paid for by proposed development. The city will not pay for any capital facilities or equipment needed. So, equipment needed for police would be paid for by development. Facilities would be paid for by new development. The cost of operation and maintenance, ongoing functioning of services is paid for by the agencies who provide the services. So, North County Fire District would pay for the fire operations, school districts would pay for the school operation. One of the things we've talked about that is being prepared is a cost-revenue study that will focus on city services. And so that will give you some, and give the city some background on what that means financially in terms of the operations and maintenance. You also discussed at previous hearings the idea of assessment district financing. And there were two different types of assessment districts that were brought up. One is the Melrose Community Facilities District, and there is discussion in your staff report regarding what that can be used for. Essentially, for the Baylands, that would be a parcel tax because there are not 12 registered voters in the Baylands right now. It would take a two-thirds vote of landowners in a basic one-acre, one-vote deal. And it is, the community facilities district is a financing tool. So it is not, it does not give you control over something that would not, you wouldn't have control of otherwise, but it does provide for an assured means of financing guaranteed against essentially the property. So you could, for example, in a Melrose Facilities District, issue a bond against that district, paid for by taxes from the district, and use for infrastructure. It could be used for site remediation, landfill closure, and so on. But it is purely a financing tool. Somebody had also mentioned landscape maintenance districts, which would be, create annual assessments against property, could be used for landscaping on roadways, parks, open space, and the operation and maintenance of those types of open-space facilities. In the municipal code right now, the city has a standard, at the time the EIR was done, of four and a half acres per thousand population, which means that in a residential development, proposed in the DSP scenario, about just short of 10,000 people, four and a half acres against the 9,800 people. And that is what was used to analyze impacts on parks. And so, based on your standard in the municipal code, all of the scenarios would provide adequate parkland. We'll get to the general plan in a second. Now, what happened subsequent to the draft EIR is that the city modified its standard to three acres per thousand because that is the maximum allowed under state law. So for actual dedication of parkland or payment of fees. Commercial industrial projects are specifically exempt, so that's only residential projects. In your general plan is a standard that refers to the National Recreation and Parks Association standards, which calls for 18 and a half acres per thousand population, which is a goal in your general plan to be looked at in the planning review. So as you get to, there is not an impact related to parkland on existing parks because according to your own municipal code, there's adequate parkland. However, the parks in all the scenarios are not as much as your general plan calls for as a goal. So when you look at open space in your land use deliberations, take a look at that goal and how you can get closer to that aspirational 18 and a half acres per thousand.
Can you explain further if 3.0 acres per 1,000 is the maximal allowable, then what does the 18-acre goal mean?
Okay. The Quimby Act is a state law that says as part of your subdivision ordinance, you may as a city require dedication of parkland. So it's enabling statute in the, for the Subdivision Map Act that says you can ask for, you can demand that amount. But you can't actually create, so you can't, under the Quimby Act, go over three acres per thousand unless you already have more than three acres per thousand. And that's the reason for the adjustment. Your general plan calls out as a goal, we would like more than the minimum or maximum allowed under the Quimby Act. And so as part of your planning review, look at the arrangement of open space, and you can, as part of your legislative actions related to general plan, related to specific plan, look at a greater amount than the Quimby Act. You can't, as part of a subdivision, then come back and say, "Okay, now we want more." But because you have the legislative actions, you can look at the larger goal. Okay?
Okay.
The other part of recreation, I think what most people are here for tonight, windsurfing resources. This is a key issue that was brought up, and there was a lot of comments in the draft EIR regarding windsurfing. The Candlestick Point State Recreation Area, we'll start as our premise of this discussion, is one of the premier windsurfing areas, not only in the Bay Area, but anywhere. It is a premier, world-class windsurfing area. The buildings that are proposed within the Baylands will increase surface roughness. It's not a nice smooth surface, so the wind will slow down. There will be a greater amount of turbulence. And so, there will be an impact to development, of development to the windsurfing resource, primarily coming from the development of the northern portion of the site. Because of the wind patterns, as you move south within the Baylands, the impacts are less. Now, the findings of the draft EIR are that the impacts of the buildings will reduce the amount of the wind speed. There will be throughout the majority, you know, through a large part of the surfing area, reduction of about 5% to 10% of wind speed. And in some isolated areas, as high as 11% or 12%. However, in terms of beginners and even some intermediates, those slower wind speeds would not really be detectable. Will be detectable in some places for the more advanced, or may be detectable for the more advanced windsurfers. And the determination of the EIR and the threshold is that the reduction in wind speed would not impair, one, the ability to launch from the launch sites at Candlestick Point. It would not impair the ability of windsurfers to sail within a desirable area and then to be able to return to the launch area. And so based on those determinations from that 5% to 10% reduction in wind speed, the EIR determined that there would be a less-than-significant impact. Now, the Candlestick Preservation Association, San Francisco Board Sailing Association, and a number of individuals provided a number of comments on the draft EIR. And said, first of all, the EIR should have adopted, formally adopted, the city should have formally adopted a threshold by action of the city council. One, in the EIR, we've typically used the thresholds that sit in SEQA Appendix G. Throughout the EIR, the thresholds are based on the SEQA appendices. However, there is no threshold sitting in SEQA guidelines that's applicable to windsurfing resources. And beyond that, the city is not required under any circumstances to formally adopt a threshold. There is a threshold in the draft EIR that is clearly stated, and that is what is required with SEQA, from SEQA. The threshold that is in the draft EIR describes those three things I said before, the ability to launch, sail within a desirable area, and return to a launch point. That is the same threshold that was used by San Francisco for the Executive Point Project. It is based on substantially degrading that resource or impairing access to the resource from launch sites. And so that threshold and some of the methodologies were already used by San Francisco to analyze impacts on the very same windsurfing resource, which is Candlestick Point State Recreation Area. And that is the reason it was used in this EIR. There are comments on the draft EIR, as I said, from the Candlestick Preservation Association and others, that presents an alternative methodology. And if you look at Master Responses 30 through 34, they will lay out the reasoning that the final EIR did not change those. The others, they also stated that the alternative methodology, which I just mentioned, should have been used. There was an objection to the use of wind tunnel testing, which was the methodology that was used in this EIR, and that the project description itself was incomplete. So in Master Responses 30 through 34, they come to these conclusions. One, the alternative analysis methodology laid out by the CPA, the Candlestick Preservation Association, others, is actually less useful and appropriate than the method used in the draft EIR because it depends, the alternative methodology, much more on wind events that cannot be controlled. So not just average speed, but gusts and lulls, and we'll hear from them tonight as to their methodology. But also the use of the wind tunnel, so involving those weather events just made, would make the analysis more subject to things that cannot be controlled. The use of the wind tunnel is well documented in the scientific literature as an effective analysis tool. And so that was used here because the model provides, you know, a way of actually seeing what would happen. But the models used for the Baylands also reflect the actual proposed building envelopes as well as maximum grading based on the EIR. So the model does show the ground level where it is proposed to be based on the grading plans, maximum amount of building throughout the Bay Area, throughout the Baylands as opposed to one big solid building mass. The EIR, and we talked about this in aesthetics, are the, each of the plans has discrete blocks. And so within each block, we could determine what the maximum building area was with setbacks, and we got maximum height in building areas within each of the blocks, and that was what actually modeled. The windsurfer, what they are looking at doing, and the recommendations, are basically to establish within the northern portion of the site, a setback area, and to push development as far south and west as possible away from the resource, as well as to establish a 900-foot area along the eastern boundary of the site where essentially buildings would be set back. So the idea is set back buildings away from the 101 freeway and push everything south. And as you remember, so now we have from two different subjects, as we talked about biology and traffic, the desire to move more development up to and closer to the Bay Shore Caltrain Station for windsurfing resources would work exactly the opposite, to push development away from the Caltrain and move it south.
Were the DSP and CPP evaluated?
Sorry. Were the DSP and CPP evaluated separately in terms of impact on the wind resources to the windsurfing areas?
Yes. Yeah, there were some slight differences because of the additional bulk in the developer-sponsored plan. So they basically, within the majority of the resource, the reduction in wind speed was 5% to 10% for all the scenarios. In a couple isolated spots in the developer-sponsored plan, it got as high as 12%, whereas in the CPP, the... the CPP, the non-residential, got just up to 11% at the highest.
The Executive Point buildout is complete, is it not? Or is it still?
I don't know that one.
Sure, okay. Is it not complete?
Yeah. In the model, what was looked at was also cumulative development, as it was known at the time to be.
Right. I'm just wondering that since Executive Point was, in theory, studied, I was wondering if anyone went back to see how the actual impacts compared with what they expected they would be.
I can, I can add, we, we have Chuck Bennett here who did that study. We can ask him, and then at the end of the hearing.
Okay, great.
We can bring that up. Okay. Talk a little bit about water supply, and then Leslie Molton, who is our expert on water supply, will complete the presentation. The basic background on water supply is, is this. The city relies on the SFPUC for water supply. City of Brisbane does not have its own independent water supply as of today. So water is purchased all from SFPUC. The city does not have adequate water supply guarantee from SFPUC to support any development on the Baylands. And in fact, you have enough water from SFPUC for what you have on, in the city today. There is no water supply for any expansion of uses at Sierra Point within the Baylands, any, within the city. So under any circumstances, for any of the scenarios that we would look at, any of the alternatives, development on the Baylands is going to require expansion of the city's Now, the way water supply was addressed, there is what is called a water supply assessment that was done, that laid out some various water conservation programs. And they were called A, B, C, D, and E. And basically, what was determined is that even with the water supply agreement, the 2,400 acre-feet that's proposed, and Leslie will talk about that agreement, extensive onsite water conservation would be required. And so the most extensive of the onsite water conservation programs would be required, along with a recycled water plant. And one of the issues related to the water plant is you can't just build a recycled water plant and then in the first increment of development, when there's very little development, send sewage into a plant where there's very little sewage and try to turn it into a usable recycled water supply. So that the actual construction of the recycled water plant would occur when there is sufficient water flow or sewer flow through that plant to actually produce an efficient plant. And that will be somewhere around, three-quarters of the way through buildout will actually take to the point that you can operate that plant. And so what would be looked at is through the first half to three-quarters of the plant, of the buildout of the Baylands, sewage would continue to flow to SFPUC for treatment. At about that three-quarters point, the wastewater flows would then go through an onsite recycled water plant, and that recycled water would be used for irrigation purposes throughout the Baylands.
That's three-quarters of the way through the DSP, I presume?
Through about, through about any of them.
Any of them.
Yeah. Maybe a little bit less in the CPP. And maybe, actually maybe a little bit longer, because there's less sewage flow as you go to lower density projects. You'd have to design a plant, so it, it would start differing, depending on how large the plant is and what its actual operations would be. What is that point that you could actually operate? So that's the reason we, we said about three-quarters. So under any circumstances, a, either the, either the proposed water transfer agreement or some other water supply would be necessary for the Baylands. And so with that, I can have Leslie talk about.
Oh, can I ask one more question?
Okay, yes.
Before Leslie starts? In the event of a high-speed rail project, would they be required to provide their own water agreement, or how does that work?
Okay. The idea of the water supply agreement is to provide water for all the uses within the Baylands, whatever they may be. So it would be rather chaotic to tell each landlord, you go find your own water supply. So the idea is to create a, whatever it is, for whatever uses end up within the Baylands, a water supply that the city can operate with, it's, and I can't remember which of the two districts, but the city could operate a water system, and there'd be adequate supply as well as storage to operate and supply whatever uses are within the Baylands. So as we look at water supply that is independent, other than the amount of water that's ultimately needed, it's independent of, of any specific use.
Okay.
Lloyd, I have a question. The Phase One will be all residents, right? So through the entire Phase One, we will not have any need for recycling, right? We want, it's not reached a two-third point, as you're talking about?
Right. And when you say Phase One, we're talking about what is identified as the, as the first phase of the specific plan for the developer-sponsored plan. Correct. And through the, the initial development of, of the site, obviously the demand for water is much less than, than the amount allowed contractually under the proposed agreement. So you would not be essentially purchasing all of the water that the agreement would allow you to.
So do, do we know the, how much water we need and how much wastewater will be generated in Phase One?
We have not identified Phase One versus, versus the balance.
The reason I'm asking is because the Phase Two is until 2035. So to be realistic, we have to look at Phase One, which is going to be the first phase that will be developed. And I want to make sure that, are we ready for that in terms of recycling water and the water supply?
Right. I'll answer a couple ways. One is with the initial increments of development, you would need far less water than, than the total amount in the agreement. And if you want, we can come back with the numbers on, on what Phase One of that would actually use and generate.
Because I was looking at the ratio, as the residential creates more water, or Phase Two is basically all commercial and all that. So there will be more water, the recycled water generated in Phase One, or more in Phase Two? And what's the ratio?
Probably the, the, the question we could get at is would, what is identified in the specific plan as Phase One, would that generate, get you up to that three, two-thirds to three-quarters point that the recycled water plant might come into, into place? And also how much water would be used compared to the amount of the agreement? We can, we can get you those numbers bef, you know, before the end of the.
That would be interesting to note, because the thing is, the most important thing is residential, when people are using it, that's where it makes a lot of sense to recycle. And when it comes to the industrial, then there's a lot more involved in terms of.
Yeah.
Clearing that water.
Yeah, the industrial uses that you have, that, that would be, that are proposed in all of the scenarios are not manufacturing processes that you would have industrial supply that could not go through a normal treatment plant. But we will, before the close of, of all the hearings, we can come back with those numbers for you. Okay. Thanks.
I think, Lloyd, though, water supply assessment has some pretty detailed breakdowns of demand as well as sewer wastewater generation, so that we can provide that information.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I want to summarize for you the water supply, and then just briefly, the impacts that we discussed in the program EIR. So the water supply transfer agreement would be a transfer from Oakdale Irrigation District, OID, to the City of Brisbane. And as Lloyd mentioned, it would not be to the, the developer individual users, but Brisbane would be securing this water supply on behalf of the city. And there is a term sheet or principles of agreement that Brisbane has, has entered into with Oakdale Irrigation District. And that is for a guaranteed 2,400 acre-feet per year of water supply for a 50-year term with renewal potential for 25-year extensions. And Oakdale has senior water rights to the Stanislaw River, and that's where the water would come from. And as you see in this slide, 2,000 acre-feet is needed to apply to the Baylands project to the maximum development proposal. 400 acre-feet of that is just for development elsewhere in the city. So again, as Lloyd pointed out, it's not only for the Baylands, but the city needs an additional supply for other development interests it has, I think specifically Sierra Point. There are future requirements that, and details that need to be developed, and that includes detailed engineering and operation plans of how the water would move through the different party systems. And that requires agreements with Oakdale Irrigation District, Modesto Irrigation District, and the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. And finally, there would be a project-level review. Commissioner?
I have a question. At this point, how much of the water, the 2,400 acre-feet of water is this, how much does Oakdale actually have compared to the 2,400 acre?
Yes, they have water rights, let me see if I can get you the exact number, but to about 250,000 acre-feet. So they have a substantial senior water right that they make use of. So let me see if I can get you the exact, but it is on that order. And they would be giving, again, a small percentage. And maybe we should go to the next slide, and let me just show you kind of the, the schematic framework of how the water would travel to Brisbane. It's a combination of moving, physically actually moving water to some of the parties, but also some crediting, and not actual movement of wet water, but some crediting between some of the parties. So OID, Oakdale, would move wet water to its neighbor, Modesto Irrigation District, and they have canals that connect the two systems. And they have done this in the past. Thank you. And then Modesto Irrigation District would not need to use as much water off the Tuolumne River, which it has rights to. And therefore, it would credit the same amount that it got from OID, the 2,400 acre-feet, to the San Francisco PUC that also takes its water off the Tuolumne River. San Francisco then would deliver actual wet water through its regional system to Brisbane. And as you heard, Brisbane is already a customer of San Francisco's regional system. So water moves from OID to MID, then it gets credited between MID to the SFPUC, no actual mixing of Stanislaw and Tuolumne River water. And then San Francisco delivers water to Brisbane. So that's schematically how it works.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
We have a letter here from Peter Drachmeyer of the Tuolumne River Trust, and, excuse me. In his letter, he claimed that the MID does not want to take any water from Oakdale because of potential contamination from the water traveling through the farms. But you've just said they've already had a transfer agreement like this. So do you know anything about this and the feasibility of this transfer going through?
Yes. Let me just mention a couple of things. Oakdale and MID in the past have executed this type of transfer, but MID and SFPUC, and no one has yet signed on specifically and in detail to this particular transfer. So they do have a history, and it is feasible. Oakdale Irrigation District, in fact, this is part of their future water resources plan. In 2007, they adopted a water resource program that called for sale out of the district and transfer of up to 60,000 acre-feet. And this is part of their plan to generate revenue, to do in, in-district measures to improve their system and be able to conserve. So it's money generating with water that they feel is excess to their future needs and that they would transfer it out of the district. So they've got a long-term plan, they did a program EIR to take a look at that, and then they've been implementing that program. In their past, in their recent past, they have already transferred out of the district on average 40,000 acre-feet per year. And they have at times used the MID system. So it's feasible, but again, they have not all agreed to this particular transfer yet.
Let me, let me get this straight. So in addition to the 40,000 acres, then they are planning to give away or sell another 65,000?
No, their, 60,000 is the, is the total.
It's the total.
Plan.
Okay, thank you.
And they've, in the past, done 40,000. So the 2,400 acre-feet that they've committed in, in principle to Brisbane is just part of, is part of that program. And just by illustration, you know, they have already transferred out of district far more than what they're proposing to, to wheel, to you folks. So that's on the next slide, Lloyd, if you can just take a look at that. And that's why in the environmental impact report, we could look at both their program EIR that they did on their program, plus their past, past practice, and say that they're, you know, this would not represent a new impact on the Stanislaw River. This is water that they have already diverted and either used within their district or transferred out of their district. So it's not additive to what they've already been diverting from the Stanislaw. With respect to impacts on the different party systems, there is state law that says in order to facilitate water transfers, entities and agencies that have conveyance facilities need to make them available for others to use to wheel water, but they don't have to make them available in a way that affects their customers. So that's really already built into state law and would be part of any agreements that are signed with MID and the SFPUC, that the way that this water gets wheeled to Brisbane cannot affect reliability or delivery to the MID or the SFPUC customers. And that would be stipulated in those agreements. And then finally, we took a look at the potential effects on the Tuolumne River from San Francisco, holding more water in Hetch Hetchy Reservoir in the upstream Tuolumne and sending it to Brisbane. And we relied on a very extensive analysis that the SFPUC did in its program EIR on its Water System Improvement Program, where they looked in detail at a range of different options for diverting more water off the Tuolumne. And they evaluated up to 25 MGD of additional diversion. Your transfer represents about 2 MGD of additional diversion. So we had very good, very detailed impact analysis information on the Tuolumne that we could make use of. There is one potential impact from this wheeling of water and diverting more water out of San Francisco's Hetch Hetchy Reservoir. The mitigation that SFPUC will be implementing is, relates to how they shape the, the releases that they do make out of Hetch Hetchy. Be happy to answer more questions on that. But because the Brisbane will help contribute to that, cumulatively contribute to that impact, Brisbane will make a contribution of some of its water so that San Francisco can do the appropriate shaping of flows and mitigate that potential impact on the Tuolumne River. So there were no significant unavoidable impacts, there was this one impact that needs mitigation that's in this EIR that would be adopted as part of the project. Should you approve it?
What happens if we use just a small portion of the 2,400 square?
So it would be proportional. I mean, there is, there is not a direct linear relationship between this particular impact and, in, in general, it has to do, it, it, it is related to how much water gets diverted off the Tuolumne, but it is also related to how San Francisco operates its reservoir. So it would be proportional what sort of mitigation you would have to contribute with respect to your supply, if that's, if that's what you're getting at.
Not quite. So say we actually build out a lot less, and we don't need as much water.
Yes.
Are we committed to that water, or would we sell it back to San Francisco? I mean, what would we do?
No, that's a good point, and actually, that is why, as I mentioned sort of early in the presentation, there's a whole nother round of really confirming what level of development one might be approved, and therefore, what is the final future projected demand that would be needed? Is this the right amount? Is this a high end? Might you want to purchase less? So you would purchase the amount that's really commensurate with the level of development that you approve. And, you know, there would always be ways in which to sort of refine your purchase agreement, should you find that you don't need the amount that you've purchased. But this is a maximum amount that would be necessary for the maximum development that was proposed and analyzed. So there's still to be agreements, there's still to be detailed evaluation of both demand and then operation, and a project-level EIR on this specific element to really confirm the final movement of water and impacts associated. and a project-level EIR on this specific element to really confirm the final movement of water and impacts associated with that.
So if Brisbane decides to expand some other land, would that 400, you said that we would need 2,000 something yards. Would the 400 be sort of held there in?
Yes, that's reserved for development elsewhere in the city, not for baylands, and that's the estimated demand for your other properties.
Okay. I think that answered my question.
I have a question regarding the impact on the Twalomee River.
Yes.
Sierra Club strongly opposes that. Their position is that there is going to be an impact on that. So how much that's going to affect this whole agreement here in supply of the water? Because that may drag on for quite a while if the Sierra Club disagrees with the analysis that was done.
Right. Yes, they, and a number of others, raised concerns about the SFPUC project. The SFPUC had a similar water transfer. Other transfers similar in nature to this have been proposed, and I know they have concerns about that. But, but the impact analysis shows this one impact that is mitigable, and the SFPUC will move forward with its mitigation measure. So I appreciate their concern, and they've certainly raised that, and we've responded to it.
But no resolution has been made yet. The Sierra Club is still in the position.
Well, the SFPUC has adopted its EIR and did not have a challenge on that same information, that same technical analysis that would be relevant here. So it has, it has.
Because my conversation with the, with the Sierra Club, they said that there's going to be an objection to this whole thing, and.
No, I appreciate that.
So the concern is that if you're going to go forward, how long it's going to take for this to be resolved? And that's another uncertainty in this whole specific plan.
The final slide is about the reliability of the water. And again, Oakdale, you may have heard, senior water right holders, they have pre-1914 water, and they are the most senior water rights holders on the river. As a result, this drought, like the 1977 drought, really, you know, led to some curtailments. But in general, they have a very secure supply and ability to guarantee a high reliability in their deliveries. Again, as I mentioned, there's a second point of analysis to be done about delivery reliability. How can MID and SFPUC move the water through their system? When are they going to have capacity available? Delivery reliability is a little different than the reliability of the source water. But OID has a high level of reliability. However, in extreme droughts, the city would need to be prepared for some cutbacks in supply. And that will all be analyzed and sort of figured out in detail, again, commensurate with the level of development that might be approved for this project.
There is also concern by the governor that he, he has mentioned that he wants to do away with some of these rights. Is this going to be a part of that too, or what?
I'm sorry, you said the governor has said he might want?
Yeah, that he's, you know, the prescriptive rights that the cities have. He is talking about doing away with that, so how that's going to affect this thing.
Yeah, I can't comment on that in particular with, with respect to these very senior water rights.
Because the thing is, for this particular project, the water supply will be an important component.
Absolutely.
And unless, until we have a certainty as to what it is, the agreement is not a certainty at this point. So somehow, we have to elaborate on that as to what we're going to do before we work on the specific plan.
Right. Again, I would just reiterate just the context in which OID has looked at its future needs and its water supply and, and actually framed a program explicitly planning water transfers up to 60,000 acre feet in its future as part of its long-term fiscal management, financial management, and water, you know, reliability management for its customers. So I just frame that for you, that this is the context within which OID is, is looking to how it's going to manage its future.
Do you know how much water they, FY, water they received this year because of the drought?
I don't know the answer to that, but we could probably get it.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a question. The analysis under extreme drought conditions, is there a definition for extreme drought conditions?
They, they have, within the district, they have their own, yes, they have their own drought sort of cutback and contingency plans. So again, we can provide information on that.
No, I'm just wondering what an extreme drought condition means. You know, like if we're looking on the other end of the spectrum, there's a definition for what a 100-year flood means.
Right.
Is there a definition for what an extreme drought condition means, and is there a period of time associated with it? And how extreme has the weather been during that period of time?
You know, until this year, they had, they had no experience of curtailment, and even though that we've had droughts, obviously, in the 90s and the 80s, et cetera. So previously, for the state, it was 1977 when there were curtailments. But I will say that each, each district sets its own drought response and contingency policy. So there isn't, I don't believe the statement's referring to a kind of a statewide definition, but just what they have with their municipal and agricultural customers set up as, you need to be prepared for these types of cutbacks if we hit these kinds of series of dry years. So we could, we could get some more information on that, but it varies. Okay, thank you.
So with that, we're at the end, and we can open the public hearing. The one thing I do want to mention in terms of the water supply is, as we mentioned during the workshops, the actual workings of the water supply agreement and moving from the term sheet to the agreement is not part of what the council has asked of the commission. So your recommendations regarding water will, will be focused on adequacy of the EIR and its discussion of impacts, as well as adequacy of supply for the specific plan, and not the term sheet itself. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else feel inspired to fill out a speaker, a speaker card? Please do so. Also, please put an approximate on the time that you think you would need. That would be helpful in terms of organizing the hearing. Okay, just a couple of reminders for the audience and for our audience at home as well. So as you've seen, the staff report has been given. That gives us a nice overall comprehensive look at what's going to happen tonight. Also, the commission questions have been asked. I don't think there's any additional questions at this point. A reminder to the commission and to the audience that we are here to keep an open mind, and we will not be making any premature projections as to the outcomes because we do realize that there are at least two more public hearings that we have left before deliberations. Note that the adopted PC rules call for meetings to end at 10:30 and less extended. Goal is to allow the public to fully participate in the hearings and have their say in a manner that is respectful of everyone's time and the scope of the task. Meetings can be extended. Meetings can also be continued to another night if there is a need. May I have a show of hands aside from those who've turned in these cards? Looks like there's about 15 or so of those who want to speak? So if you want to speak in addition to, not, not those who've already submitted. So I'm just trying to get a gauge. Okay. All right, thank you. And we can extend the time limit for each speaker as time permits, but we do remind you that we would like to have, give everyone an opportunity to speak. So please allow other speakers to speak. If you have an additional comment, please wait until afterwards. We will try to organize the speakers according to the shorter comments first so that folks can move on if they, they need to go. And as a courtesy to your fellow citizens, please adhere to the time limits established and agreed upon. Address questions and comments to the commission. If anybody has comments that they are, that they have been, that have been made that you agree with, please just simply state that you agree with so-and-so. There's no need to repeat that. And please keep the comments on the topic under consideration at tonight's meeting. That would be public services and facilities, recreation, utilities and service systems, and water supply. In addition to that, we've had feedback from the public that we would like to remind everyone that our purpose here is to have constructive and civil speech, please. That we would like to keep this a community-conscious and classy city. And so please use a language that is appropriate for a public forum. Thank you very much. With that, I would like to invite David Rata.
I'm a windsurfer, and I'm here because I'm concerned about the development. There's many of my friends there. I've been sailing the stick for 25 years, and I also enjoy Brisbane a lot. It's a wonderful place, and it's great to spend time either before going sailing or after going sailing there. It's a wonderful little community. And mostly, I just want to comment, and if I may, give a suggestion, looking at your public speech plan, page 27. And I'm just looking at this map, and it's a wonderful development. It has landscaping, it has marshes, it's great. It would be even greater if the development is pushed back, if not all the way to Coltrane in this area, at least all the way to the Class II trail that is in development. And we've just dedicated this area to an extension of the green and beautiful landscaping that you're planning down here. You will achieve a number of goals, and I think number one will be to make all the environmental possible organizations in the area enthusiastic about development. Number two, you will make the windsurfer very happy because we are not going to lose our resource that despite what has been said about wind tunnel and things like that, is going to be compromised. And number three, if I may, you will also show San Francisco how a sensible and ecologically sound development can happen in the Bay Area. And instead of building and building and building, how it's happening in the city, you will provide a wonderful resource for the Bay Area, and people will appreciate it for decades to come. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Ms. Heidi Kersley?
Thank you for giving us an opportunity to talk. I'm a, what you would call an intermediate windsurfer. And some of the numbers that you guys were proposing as far as how this was going to affect us as far as launching and windsurfing, and then coming back to the launch. Windsurfing is a very subtle thing in relationship to how we rig and how we windsurf individually. And a little bit of wind can make a very big difference as far as how high it is or low it is in relationship to our rigging. The lower the wind, the bigger the sail, and the harder to maneuver, the bigger sail. So as an intermediate, it's not necessarily a better situation if I go to a location and have to rig a bigger sail and struggle and try to get back to shore. So I would be highly affected by any changes in the wind at Candlestick, and I would really appreciate it if it was not, if it was considered in relationship to that. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leori, Leora, sorry, Vestas?
Hi. For the record, could you let us know, are you a Brisbane resident?
I am not. I'm a resident of San Francisco. But I do love Brisbane, too. My name's Leora Vestal. I've been windsurfing for about seven years. My husband is a windsurfer, and so are my children, ages nine and 11. I started windsurfing as a way to lose weight and get in shape after having my kids. I started sailing at Candlestick about two years ago. It's a five-minute drive from my home, and it's the only place I sail on the San Francisco Bay because it is well-suited for intermediate windsurfers. I don't think it's a beginner place. I don't know a lot of beginners that sail there. There are fewer challenges there, however. The water is relatively flat, and there's no shipping or boat traffic, for example. Before I started sailing at Candlestick, I traveled to Sherman Island near Aniok just about every weekend during the windy season because I was a beginner, and it is safer and warmer there. Most of the windsurfers you see here behind me that frequent Candlestick are some, some of the best in the Bay Area, if not California and beyond. It is worth it to go on a windy day. I highly suggest that, to see their ability and appreciate the fact that you have a world-class windsurfing site in your backyard. The first time I sailed at Candlestick, I struggled. The wind was much stronger and gustier than the meter indicated in some areas, and then holly and less windy in others. In short, it was very challenging, and I got smacked around pretty hard. When I finally made it back to shore, I cried. Candlestick and I are good with each other now, though. I try to get there as much as I can, sometimes squeezing a couple of hours between work and picking up my kids from school. On some days, I'm still in my wetsuit when I pick them up because I don't have time to change. In a couple of years, they'll be good enough to sail at Candlestick, too. I can't wait to sail with them there. I truly appreciate that the city has spent time and resources to evaluate the impacts on windsurfing because that in and of itself is an acknowledgement of its importance to the area, that the sport is woven into the fabric of the baylands and is worth preserving. So I just ask that you continue to do everything you can to safeguard an irreplaceable resource, one that enables area residents to engage in a healthy, athletic, and inspiring activity in an area that is decidedly unhealthy in so many ways. More specifically, please, you know, look at the suggestions of the Candlestick Preservation Association. And I liked a lot, you know, what David S. said about the placement of the buildings and considering, you know, where the least impact would be for that. So all those types of things would go a long way in ensuring there is still enough wind for the sport here. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophie Sahiri? Hi. For the record, are you a Brisbane resident?
No, I'm from Emeryville.
Where? I'm sorry?
Emeryville.
Oh, Emeryville.
I windsurf at Candlestick about 60 days a year, and that's one of my favorite places for practice. I'm sponsored by JP and Neil Pride. They're pretty good brands for making windsurfing gear and stuff. Anyway, Candlestick is already affected by a couple of structures, upwind of north of 101. First one is the garbage place, ecology. We can smell that from the water. And there's a big, huge lull that affects the wind direction and makes it swirly and kills the wind in the middle. So we have a nice first section, and then a lull from ecology, the smell comes there. And then as far, farther we travel south or west, we get the muds, the dirt that has been made there. We get the dirt in our eyes. And if the wind direction is a little bit westerly, we get that dust farther to the launch. So anything will be built north of 101 will destroy Candlestick forever.
Are you saying the dust from the baylands?
Yes, it could travel at least
Okay.
two miles south or east that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Louis Manila? So for the, hi.
I am not a San Francisco resident.
You're a San Francisco?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, President, and Commissioners, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I do support fully my windsurfing colleagues and other people who also use the area for recreation, though I support development for jobs and housing. You know, I think we should really consider smart growth to make sure that other sort of resources not being impacted. I've been windsurfing at Candlestick for about 15 years. It's a great place. It's, we consider it world-class due to the skill level of people that are attracted to the area, and I would not want to see that impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tim Robert?
Hi, Tim Robert. I'm a San Francisco resident near the Excelsior, so I'm less actually than 10 minutes from Candlestick. I've been windsurfing at Candlestick since, I think, about 1988. One of the things that makes it unique, you've already heard from folks who've called it that, is has been historically the consistency of the wind, which is very important for quality windsurfing. That has been degraded already, as folks have said, and I would anticipate that the development as has been outlined and proposed is only going to degrade the consistency of the wind further. I would ask on behalf of Bradley and the Candlestick Point Preservation Group that you look at the letter he has submitted, and I don't pretend to understand or to have gotten into the science as Brad has. He couldn't be here tonight. He wanted to be here. He's out of town. But I'm sure you'll take a look at that. I would say, having talked to Brad a little bit, that some of his key points are that we contend that the study by the developers is very limited, flawed, and not particularly accurate for predicting the impact of what's being proposed. I think I would finish with saying that it's engineering, it's hydraulics, it's meteorology. However, it's not rocket science. When it's really windy and you want to get out of the wind, you go behind a barrier to get out of the wind. It stops the wind. They're proposing building a huge barrier between the wind and the windsurfing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Henry Dubois?
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm a resident of San Francisco. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to add just a few points. It'll be brief. First of all, it's wonderful to see that it's recognized in the report that Candlestick is a world-class windsurfing destination, in particular in urban areas. I think it's unique to have such a, such a location close to an urban area. I can only confirm, not being originally from this area or from this country, that it's known, and pictures of the site are known abroad and recognized. It is unfortunate that, as was pointed out before, the site has been already somewhat degraded from a wind perspective and also from an environmental perspective. Fortunately, Candlestick is not known outside of the area for some of the odors that drift from that plant, but that's, that's pretty regrettable that that should happen on the water. And as to the points that were made earlier, I think there's one thing that was stated that does not align with, with real experience of windsurfing, which was that there would be a 5% to 10% reduction in wind. So let's assume that that, that is, that is accurate. I cannot pretend to understand the physics, but even assuming that were correct, the statement that that would not impact windsurfing is just, does not seem plausible. I'm an intermediate windsurfer, definitely not an expert. I can take as a day today when I and others sailed, it was a day of light wind, and it was one of those days that are common throughout the year. There are many days of strong wind, but there are, those are not every single day. There are days of light wind like today, and today was one of those marginal condition days where a 5 to, where many of us were just able to sail, a 5% to 10% lower wind would pretty much have made the site not usable. So I think that it's, it is hard to comprehend how this reduction can be, can be said to not have any impact on intermediate or beginner windsurfers. Thank you.
Again, can you explain?
I think she has a question for you.
I have a question. So you, what are you saying has degraded the windsurfing? You're saying the smells from ecology, and what's the other one?
The presence of the plant, of the ecology plant, of buildings.
And you said there was another one, or not?
No.
Just that?
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you. Johan Vargas?
Johan Vargas. I'm a resident of Alameda, but I work in San Francisco, work at San Francisco General Hospital. It's only about five minutes away from, from this area, from Candlestick. And I've had the opportunity to windsurf here for the last 12 years. It's definitely one of my favorite sites. I think that is share among the, many of the people that you see here. People are willing to come here from far away just because of the uniqueness of this place. I don't want to be redundant. I think all of the commentary, as you've heard here, are completely valid and echoed by, by the windsurfing community at large, and many of us couldn't be here today. I was, have to say that I was really disturbed when I heard some of the comments, when the explanations asked the metrics in which are being utilized to measure the environmental impact, the potential impact this construct would have in windsurfing, and taking into consideration that the ability to launch and be able to return to launch safely, which is certainly important, but if that's the only metric that would be considered as to measure the impact into the wind quality and how it affects the sport of windsurfing is simply naive. It simply sort of is, lacks the understanding that is involved in the sport. I would also implore that in the planning stages, as this continues to be revised, that there's a partnership that is constructed, where the planning commissioners seeks out requests, and in particular, the Candlestick Preservation Association has been ready from the beginning, as from the outset, we've been forward, Bradley Lee in particular, rendering our opinions, our, our views, and explaining to others, for those that are not windsurfing, what are the requirements? What is it that makes it work? What are the, these subtle characteristics about it are difficult to comprehend unless you're really involved in the sport? And I think they're being missed out in this, maybe with all good intentions in this development planned. So I, that's my main concern that I want to voice out today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anya Miller?
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I think maybe you should hear all the windsurfers first.
I'm going according to the minutes, and so
Oh. estimate here is I will yield to the rest of the windsurfers at this point.
We have Mr. Dan Siskin?
I wanted to thank you for, for listening to all of our concerns, and I think that the staff did a good job in many ways in describing the comments that have been submitted to the EIR. But I think that one area where we might be able to offer a little clarification is in terms of why we think the measurement is inappropriate. As Henry said, and I think rather eloquently, Candlestick is a place where you can sail on days where you can't sail anywhere else. So the marginal days that you were talking about are days that are special to us because it, Candlestick is a place where we can get out in the water on the days where there's a heat wave. And it's a, it's a place where we can get out in the water on days where winds are light everywhere else. So in the letter that was referenced from the Candlestick Preservation Association, and does everyone have a copy of that letter?
Yes, we do.
Okay. They talk about, Brad talks about setting specific guidelines in terms of miles per hour of the wind as a minimum threshold, because under that threshold, we can't sail. So to talk generally in terms of a 5% or 10% reduction isn't really as meaningful as to say anytime that the, that the wind drops below 16 miles an hour and the gusts are less than 20 miles an hour, the site is rendered unsailable. And that's true whether we're talking about beginners or intermediates or experts unless people are on very specialized and very, very expensive gear. So I wanted to make that point of clarification. Also, I know that there's very, a number of different scenarios that are being considered. So we would ask that when the, when the council is considering these scenarios, they take into consideration the effect on the wind. So wherever the buildings are built, however high they are, that's going to have a different impact. So the, the general EIR that was done, was done on a hypothetical project. When you look at the specific projects, I know that you'll be doing a lot of deliberation. There's a lot of factors to consider, as we've heard tonight. We'd ask that you look at the specific buildings, their specific placement, and their specific impact on the downwind resource, because it is a special resource to us. We, we also, we don't want to argue the details ad nauseam. We just want to ask that you consider windsurfing in all of your decisions, and that you are good upwind neighbors to us, and we will try to be good downwind neighbors to the city. And I think that there are a lot of exciting opportunities for, for windsurfers and everyone else in the Bay Area to take advantage of all the development.
I have one question. How many days a year do you have wind from 16 to 20 miles per hour that you could actually windsurf? Does anybody have a clue?
It's in their testimony.
Oh, it is in their testimony.
I think, I, I think, you know, the, the windsurfing season runs from September, runs from about March through September. Pretty comparable, October, comparable to the baseball season. And during that time, Candlestick is the most consistently windy place in the Bay Area. So much more than half of those days. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ms. Anya Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission.
Thank you for yielding.
Sorry, I won't, won't be talking about windsurfing. It's not my thing. I do have some other comments on the EIR, and one in, in general, based on what I heard last time, your consultant stated that the EIR is, quote, "not an aspirational document." However, the city's general plan is such a document, and it was adopted by the vote of the people, so it, it does express the aspirations of our people. And because EIR has been noticed to cover not only the developer's application, but also the myriad amendments to the general plan, that's the EIR. It's about the amendments that it would require. The EIR are therefore, in effect, proposes to radically alter our residents' aspirations regarding the Baylands. That's my view. Those existing aspirations, as you know, include mainly the maintenance of our unique small town, quality of life through careful, reasonable improvements and developments, as well as full recognition of the hazards created by the polluted and unregulated bay fill over time. That's why I hope that you keep in mind the primary question, do you really need to amend the general plan? If not, what kind of development should be approved? If you determine that the general plan must be changed, then the question is by how much? How would the proposed development affect our basic community goals? Now, what should be changed is any reliance on the outdated zoning map that's used in this EIR. The map should have been brought up to date long ago to be consistent with the current adopted general plan. Or at least, there should have been a disclaimer in the EIR that the map is incorrect. On the water discussion, I heard that Sierra Point would be included in the additional water requirements, but I remember that Sierra Point has made already, the developers of Sierra Point, as part of their development, have made a separate arrangement for water that they need at the, do you remember this? You dealt with it, some of your commissioners dealt with Sierra Point. Isn't it true that they have their water?
I think so, yeah.
Guaranteed? They have an arrangement already?
Maybe John can answer.
If you want me to answer?
Yes, please.
It's my understanding that there's no water for, allocated for the undeveloped parcel, the hotel site, does not have a secured water supply.
But the other plans that you have already approved that are pending, sitting there, they have water, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So not everything that's not yet on Sierra Point. Then I'd like to cite Master Response 2.419 on land use near hazardous sites, page 2.4-61. Quote, "Mid mitigation measure 4G3 specifies that grade K to 12 school facilities shall not be located within 0.25 miles of a facility with hazardous emissions or that handles hazardous or acutely hazardous materials, substances, or waste unless approved by the School Facilities Planning Division of the California Department of Education in conformance with California Code of Regulations Title 5, Section 14010, which sets forth California Department of Education criteria for school site locations. Based on other restrictions, the EIR determined that the charter high school sewn on the DSP plan cannot be located where proposed, as it would be too close to the Kindermore unflammable liquid storage tanks. Similar restrictions should be indicated with reference to the recology hazardous waste treatment site. As stated at the previous hearing, a map showing the potentially acceptable sites for schools should be included in the EIR before any certification. Further, Master Response 2.421 on public facilities, quote, "The increased demand a project will place on public facilities and services and the individual or entity responsible for meeting this mandate is not itself an environmental impact required to be evaluated under CEQA." In response to the EIR, there is no comment submitted, received from a Bay Shore Elementary School district. Yet that district would be responsible for building any K to 8 schools required under the DSP. It's not a Brisbane school district, and any tax money will go to the Bay Shore district. And there's no, under the DSP, a statement of the district's understanding of the plan and their capacity to implement their role should now be sought. That should be part of your consideration before you go any further, and including the EIR before certification and any planning considerations. I have some other comments later about your record. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Clara Johnson?
Clara Johnson, I would ask you to please listen to the windsurfers. Their presence is peaceful and aesthetically pleasing on the bay. I agree with Anya Miller about the impact of general plan amendments on the 1994 general plan, and how that might affect the aspirations of the people of Brisbane. It is difficult to believe that considering all the It is difficult to believe that considering all the above-named items that include the title of this public hearing, that there are only two related mitigations in the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. They are on MMR, page 497, mitigation measure 4.0-1A. It relates to an agreement between the Baylands developer and the City of Brisbane regarding the fair share of cost of city-constructed water storage facilities that should be paid by the developer. In the interest of equity and transparency, the agreement and the supporting data that declares what percentage of city-constructed water storage and connection facilities are the fair share of the developer for the fire flows and the peak daily water demands to serve the project's site development, it must be reviewed and evaluated by an independent qualified engineering firm in a peer review audit, after which the proposed agreement, supporting data and audit will be sent to the city council for approval. The way it's stated now, it says that's all the responsibility of the city engineer, and I don't, that seems to be unfair to the engineer and unfair to the people of Brisbane. The approval should take place in a public meeting with the agreement, supporting data, and peer review audit would, would also be available to the public. Transparency is essential to ensure the integrity of the process. At, in mitigation monitoring, a reporting plan, page 4-98, mitigation measure 4.0-1B. As a note, the state requires that large developments prove that they have a water supply for their development. This mitigation is vague and incomplete. It appears that the amount of water that will be diverted to the meadows of the, believe it or not, Poopanaut Valley from the total of 2 million gallons per day, or 2,400 acre feet per year, agreed to be purchased by Brisbane from the Oakdale Irrigation District, will vary greatly from year to year, depending on the water and the weather conditions in and around the Poopanaut Valley. It is possible that the required diversion may result in there being less water available than is needed to sustain this project. The whole point of this agreement is to provide adequate water supply, and this mitigation may not permit the amount of water needed to reach Brisbane. The allocations from the SFPUC will be under pressure because of limited supply and no additional allocation may be available. The result could be that in order to supply enough water to the Baylands, the amount of water available to residential Brisbane and GVMID would, might have to be lowered and water rationing might be imposed. These are perhaps remote possibilities, but nonetheless, possibilities if there is an inability to change the allocation and the needs of that, the Poopanaut Valley are larger than expected. The Modesto Irrigation District must sign agreements in order for the water agreement scheme to work. This district, if you check their comments in the comments section of the FEIR, are, are very interesting. The district has voiced considerable doubt about the ability of OID and the City of Brisbane Agreement to work, since there are multiple entities that in some cases must make multiple agreements to do so. The Modesto Irrigation District, the Oakdale Irrigation District, the SFPUC, and the City of Brisbane are the organizations involved. In Master Response 21, at 2.4.21, on page 2.4-68 and 69, it states, "CEQA requires an EIR to evaluate the physical impacts that will result from the expansion of facilities, services, or utilities to serve a project, and therefore, to the extent that the proposed development of the Baylands would require such expansion, the impacts have been evaluated in the relevant sections of the EIR. I've not been able to find the evaluation and any necessary mitigation of any of the following: for water storage and connections, water facilities, sewer, recycling facilities, sewer and water piping facilities, piping, electrical, telephonic, internet, fiber optic lines, cables, vaults, and other enclosures, natural gas or stormwater facilities, police, fire, hazmat, or other emergency response facilities, and recreation facilities infrastructure." Where is the consideration of physical impacts for the above-mentioned facilities to be built to serve the Baylands? And where are any necessary mitigations needed to reduce their impacts? The response volume contains this statement on page 2.4-68. "The final EIR includes mitigation measures to reduce significant environmental impacts of the infrastructure construction," but doesn't say where. This is neither an evaluation of the impacts on infrastructure construction, of infrastructure construction, nor are there any mitigations for it. There are storage, water storage facilities mentioned in mitigation measure 4.0-1A, but there's no provision for any mitigation since there's no evaluation of the impacts. The water storage tanks may have numerous impacts on views, open space, wildlife, and others. These facilities might be onsite or offsite, so they have to be considered in wherever they're located. The recycled water plant is infrastructure, yet there is no mitigation for it despite the impact of reduced open space, increased impervious service, that increases water storm runoff, increased energy use, and potential air pollution increases. There are no mitigation measures that indicate any assessment nor mitigation for any of the impacts of infrastructure construction." I realize that's a repeat, but I kind of, I wanted to emphasize that for you. "In reviewing Master Response 29 about the water supply in the response volume, the description of the impacts is inadequate and the process of acquiring all the agreements needed to secure and deliver the water is not assured, and if the water supply acquisition and delivery is not assured, then the project is not possible." I recommend that you read Modesto Irrigation District comments in the comments volumes, pages 5-42 through 5-47. It explains why this EIR is legally insufficient. I suggest you read it all, but if it isn't possible, then just read pages 5-45 and 46. There is a section on page 5-46 that mentions the problems that Brisbane, the problem that Brisbane needs the OID water year-round, but the Modesto Irrigation District canals only operate during the irrigation season. The developer would say, well, that is only a water credit system, but the truth is that it creates a situation where all the parties, OID, MID, SFPUC, and Brisbane, must all agree to that part of it. And there may be times when there isn't, it isn't possible for the SFPUC or the others to accommodate, to accommodate the water deficit of 2 million gallons, gallons a day for up to six or seven months at a time. This does not make for a secure water supply. There are also some instructive comments made by the California State Lands Commission, a powerful state agency that you don't hear much about. They have some jurisdiction in the Baylands. The comments that they have made begin on page 5-11 of the comments volume. I recommend reading page 5-14, items 2 through 5, and on page 5-20, items 3, 4, and 5. Here are excerpts from page 5-14. "The renewable energy alternative," page 5-67 of the draft PEIR, states that "the renewable energy alternative would be environmentally superior, as it is consistent with the Brisbane general plan, involves minimal impact compared to the other scenarios and alternatives, and meets key project objectives. To the commission staff's knowledge, the draft PEIR does not contain a statement declaring the renewable energy generation alternative to be infeasible. Pursuant to CEQA, public agencies should not approve projects as proposed if there are feasible alternatives or mitigation measures available which would substantially lessen the significant environmental effects of such projects." Public Resources Code, Section 21002. Therefore, barring specific evidence, the renewable energy generation alternative is economically, environmentally, legally, socially, or technologically infeasible. The city is obligated to select the environmentally superior alternative over the proposed project. The Lands Commission also expresses concern for the threat that the proposed project would bring to public trust values that protect water quality and wetlands. It also suggests improvement, improvements, a more detailed description of how remediation and construction activities would be conducted in the programmatic EIR. In a prior hearing, if I may, I'll divert for a moment. Another question has occurred to me. What if the Stanislaw River does not have enough flow to satisfy all the water rights? That's the pre-1914 water rights granted to those water rights holders. Then what happens? In a prior hearing, a commentator, or a commenter, mentioned that given enough money and enough time, that almost any hazardous contamination could be remediated to safe conditions. That might be true in many cases, but the point is, the owners of contaminated land are only required to clean the land to the current acceptable standard, the maximum contamination level of each contaminant. The level of what is considered an acceptable risk is one that can and does change over time for some contaminants that are later found to be more dangerous than was known in the past. The landowners are not required to remove all of the hazardous material, and we should all keep in mind that we are being exposed to what someone else thinks is an acceptable I just wanted to say something. You were advised that, that the council had a certain intent for you. I think when a council, having been a council member, suggests something, they have their concerns, but they appointed all of you to the planning commission because they wanted your judgment. And I would say, if you want to say something about that water agreement, you feel it's important that you owe it to, to the city council to do so, that you, I'm a civil libertarian. I don't like the idea that people are told that they can't express themselves. And I think that you, if you have something to say about the water agreement, go ahead and say it. Your relationship is with the city council, and your staff simply advises you on their opinion based on their understanding of the city council intent, I realize. But I just think that, I hope you will be audacious in your judgments about what you can say and not say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we take a break?
So actually, I want to make sure that, I want to reassure everyone. Typically, we acknowledge all the written communications at G, but I wanted to ensure that everyone is aware that we have four written communications pertaining specifically to tonight's meeting. One from John Dappo, I believe, dated October 29th, about the windsurfing issue. One from Candlestick Preservation Association by Bradley, dated October 27th, about windsurfing. And one from Heather Buckley that was sent to us on 9/28, but we made it a note then that it would be addressed today and included in today's conversation, and she was also speaking to windsurfing. And then we also had a letter or email from Mr. Peter Drachmeyer from the Tonami River Trust, the policy director, dated October 14th, about water supply tonight. So those were four written communications we did have, and I wanted to assure everyone that we have read it and we have received it.
I think this particular one should be distributed to the audience also, because it has a very good, good reference to the article that was in the, in the B.
Yeah, and I think it's right up front. If anybody wants it, I'm sure you can get it. There's a stack up front that's clipped together for all written communications. Feel free to get a copy.
Yeah, and it relates to the agreement that Ms. Clara Johnson just mentioned.
Okay. So at the request of Commissioner Munir, we would like to take a five-minute break. Thank you.